Good morning. This is the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of June 23rd, 2025. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on July 1, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. Roll call. Everyone is present. Has everyone had a chance to read the June 9th minutes? And if so, is there a-
I've moved their approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June 29th, or excuse me, June 9th, 2025. Meeting, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda.
So I'll move.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1734, for Sherri Wilkie, to review a single wide mobile home in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CUR 1734, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1839, for Michael Basetti, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1904, for Michael and Sawyer Pellon, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1922, for Michael and Sawyer Pellon, to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 2171, for Greg Helgason, to review living in a 12-by-56 worksite trailer while building living quarters in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval. And finally, item nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-02, for William and Mavis Jeffrey, to review a multifamily residence in a suburban residential district, and staff recommends approval.
Are there any items you'd like removed from this?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Are there any items the Commission would like removed for separate consideration? The Chair would address a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
To move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. I have too many loose pages here. Item number 10.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 10 is Preliminary Plan, COPPL 25-0006, to subdivide and create Sage Brush Track 1 and Sage Brush Track 2 of Haywood Estates. The applicants are Todd and Lori Hanson. Their agent is Anderson Engineers. Location of the property is 13846 Highway 40. Access is off Highway 40 in Custer. There's no special flood hazard area on the property. On the screen you'll see the criteria that I evaluated based on the layout plan. There are a couple that are checked no. I'll get to that in my analysis. This is an overview of what they're proposing to do. Track 1 will be 40 acres. You can see that highlighted in red on the screen. 39.57 acres in Pennington County, .43 acre in Custer County, and it is vacant of any structures or utilities. Track 2 is going to be 3.02 acres. 2.47 acres of that will be in Pennington County and .55 in Custer County, and there will be a remaining balance of this tract, and it'll be 122 acres in both Pennington and Custer Counties. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are requesting to subdivide and create these two tracts. Comprehensive Plan Amendment, COCA 25-004, and Rezone, CORZ 25006, and variance to lot size, VA 25-006, were approved by the Board of Commissioners on May 19th of this year. Staff did note that there were multiple certificates that needed to be adjusted and amended. I did contact their engineers, surveyors, and they were on board with fixing those. They are included as conditions of approval. The operating permits that were checked in the analysis section or the criteria have also been addressed by the landowner. So with that, staff does recommend approval of Preliminary Plan, COPPL 25-0006, with conditions.
Other questions for Jason?
Quick one.
Michael.
That number two tract has the double wide and the barn, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Chair would address a motion on this item?
Make a motion that we pass Preliminary Plan number COPPL 250006 with four conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass COPPL 25-0006 with four conditions. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item number 11.
Cody Sax, senior partner. Item 11 is Major Planning Unit Development Amendment, CUU 08-010. The applicant is Laredo Holdings, and the agent is Long Branch Engineering. The location of the property is Sunset Ranch Subdivision, which is located off Gateway Drive. There are multiple uses in the area, mostly residential. It is a zoned planning and development district. Access is off Gateway Drive, and there is a special flood hazard area, Zone A, on the property. So what the applicants are looking at doing, there's currently two plats. One's going through the city of New Underwood, and one's currently making their way through our office as well, to subdivide this southern portion into more residential lots, and then to subdivide this larger tract up here. However, the PUD when it was created said that there's only allowed 148 residential lots. They're already at that. So with the new plat, with the two new plats, they're proposing to go to 154 residential lots. So that condition would change to allow 154 residential lots. It would allow 154 residential structures as well. And then the other thing that they're changing is PUDs required common area, so there are several common lots for basically public use for anyone in the subdivision. They're currently required 80, but with the existing common lots, there's 64.4 acres, so they're just requesting to go to what's already existing for the common lots and not dedicate anymore. So with that, staff is recommending approval of Major Planning and Development Amendment, CUU 08-10, with conditions.
Questions for Cody?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Cody, under the recommendation, Roman numeral 2, A1, it says the density of the planned unit development shall not exceed 154 residential lots. Then I go to Roman numeral 7, Analysis, and under A1 it says increase the number of residential lots from 148 to 153. Do we need to make those confirm?
So yeah, staff will change that. What happened? So there's two, there's two plats going on by different surveyors, and like I said, the one for tipped-in properties is currently going through New Underwood because it's in their plating jurisdiction. So Long Branch, when they submitted this, they were unaware of that, that additional lot that's being created up there. So their original request is 153. I wrote the report, and then I contacted Kale at Long Branch, and he said to amend it to 154. So that, that number in the analysis didn't change, but in the recommendation, it changed to what they're requesting with the 154.
Okay. So we don't have to reconcile the numbers on the paper?
Not necessarily. That's the analysis. I will make sure that when it goes to the Board of Commissioners that that number will say 154 in the analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Cody, a while back, a couple of years now, I guess, we reviewed some, what would you call them, ATV playgrounds?
Yeah, I believe that was for someone to have a private dirt bike track on their, on their property.
Correct. And the contention at that time was there was supposed to be some commons areas devoted to this sort of thing, but it hadn't been developed. But where I'm going with this, do we, when we do one of these, do we notify the current property owners of this PUD that a change like this is being requested?
Yeah, so they have to get 20% of the signatures within the PUD, and then everyone within that PUD would receive a notification letter, kind of like the 500 feet. So everyone within 500 feet of the PUD receives that letter, and then everyone inside receives a letter of what they're proposing to change it to.
Okay, and you have that for your files so that we don't, because we based it upon what commons areas were at that time and what was developed and what wasn't developed, and, and now we're switching, what, from 80 acres to 64.4? That's quite a bit. Now, lot-wise, I don't, the number doesn't seem to balance out either. Aren't they required five acre, five acre lots?
Five acre minimum. There's, so quite a few of those, I believe, are actually 10 acre lots. So they, and I did bring this up to Kale, going to 154 really only addresses the current plats that are going through. If anyone wanted to subdivide in the future, they'd be going through this process themselves.
Oh, all right. In other words, that's why that number doesn't balance out, because 15 acres would only give you three more lots.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just the minimums, the minimum's five. It can, it can be more. There are quite a few. I believe all along this, this road from this lot down, I believe, are 10.
So they're going to also look at, in their sales approach, revisions in possible existing platted areas?
Correct. And then to go back to your comment on the, the common area, one thing that this addresses, and we ran into it with, I don't know if anyone remembers, Rushmore Ranch, where they had 80 acres. That common area, once you get down to, it's really, ends up being the last 80 acres of undeveloped land, so you might have 64 acres of common area. So you have to make up that 16 acres somehow, so it'd be the last three or four, or however many lots it takes to get to that number. Lots, you could run into a homeowner who bought a lot for residential use who has to now use it as common area because they're the last ones in line. So it addresses that, to keep that from happening.
Before I close, but we are, in this one, we're switching that commons areas to 64.4, which is the-
Which is existing, so we don't run into that issue.
Thank you, Cody.
Okay. Any other questions? Chair would address a motion?
I move to approve Major Planned Unit Development Amendment, PU 08-10, with the conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to, to approve PU 0810 with conditions? All in favor, oh, excuse me. Discussion?
I just wanted, I don't know with all the extra people we got, whether anybody's here to oppose or support that, or?
Is anyone here to speak on that item?
I guess I'd like to hear if they're opposed to it.
No.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number 12.
Item number 12 is Mining Permit, COMP 25-0001. It's to allow a mining operation on the subject property. The applicant is 63 Industries LLC, Clyde Lipp, that's the agent, and the landowner is Mule Ear LLC. Location of the property is located at the corner of 225th Street and 151st Avenue. The property in total is 640 acres, currently zoned agriculture district with existing land use of agriculture. Access is off 225th Street and 151st Avenue. There is flood hazard area, Zone A, and floodway on the property. So mining permits under Section 320 are conditional use permits. So the zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit application. I don't know if you want me to read that all, but in summary, it doesn't, it doesn't really meet the requirements. It does appear to be, could be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare. It doesn't fit the current or future land use in the area, and there's inadequate access to the property. The zoning ordinance under 320 lists five criteria that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners may consider in viewing a mining permit. These are similar to the criteria for the conditional use permit, and it doesn't appear that they would, that a mining permit on the location fits the area. So per their operation plan that was submitted, commencement and completion date would be June 2025 through June 2045, so a 20-year period. The applicant did state at the May 12th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting that the estimated timeframe would only be for five years. I'm not sure the discrepancy. I know the state tells you to put your permit farther out than you might necessarily need, but they'd have to address that. They're kind of mined sand and gravel. Their application indicates zero to 40 feet of excavation depth. However, the applicant stated at the meeting that they'd only go down 14 feet. Number of trucks per day was not provided to the planning department. No blasting would occur. The construction would consist of excavators, dozers, and scrapers, and a crusher. The applicant does state in their narrative and on their, their site plan that berms would be placed on the property to minimize noise and site intrusion, and that water would be used on the crusher. They are proposing a 50-foot buffer to implement between the operation and the wetlands and floodplain, and ground penetrating radar does not show water in a depth of 15 feet. However, no environmental assessment was conducted or provided to our office, so staff cannot verify those claims. It also states in their operation plan that any sediment that got past their erosion sediment control would be filtered out in that, in the wetland. That would require a floodplain development permit, and that would also need to show that that sediment wouldn't impact that drainage. They did submit a reclamation plan. In, in addition to the crusher site and the stockpile site, they only had 10 to 15 acres disturbed at one time, so a total of 20 to 30 acres with the area of the stockpiles. The applicant is proposing to recontour the land and reclaim it to pasture land. They have submitted a stormwater plan through our office and through the state DNR, and any BMPs would be, have to be in compliance of the Pennington County Stormwater Manual. They would be required to post a surety bond if the mining permit was approved, and they'd have to do a cost estimate for the surety to include erosion control measures, stabilization, and reclamation. The zoning ordinance talks about residents within 300 feet. The nearest residence that I can tell is approximately 400 feet from the mining operation, so they do meet that. Again, there are wetlands on the property. There is a stream and pond. They do propose to cross this stream, and I believe they said an 18-inch culver would have to be put in. They'd have to provide information to show that an 18-inch culver would be adequate for that. And then this is the floodplain. Anything in red is floodway. Blue is 100-year, and yellow is 500-year. So 500 years unregulated, and the other two require floodplain development permits and a study. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. As you can see, they proposed berms on 225th and 151st, and then they have some BMPs of soil check dams are in the green, and as you can see, they do have, they do have a buffer between the wetlands. So they do plan on phasing it. Phase one would be the crusher site. Again, it's about 10 acres, and then they would move on from there. They do have, they do show proposed future mine site as well on there. Hours of operation have not been submitted by the applicant. Dust control measures, they would use dust suppression on the crusher, which would be water. They'd have water on site. Vegetative berms, soil roughening. Berms must be installed to reduce noise. MSHA has some requirements for that. No lighting plan was submitted, but again, no hours of operation was submitted, so I don't know if they, how, how late they'd be going if they need a light. There is no blasting that's proposed. They did not provide a spill prevention plan as bulk storage is less than, or is only 1,320 gallons. Equipment would be refueled using mobile refuelers. However, those mobile refuelers would also be required to have secondary containment, and they do not propose to store any chemicals on site. They would not be allowed to dump. The ordinance requires screening berms, which they do have proposed on 225th and 151st, as I showed in that previous picture. So the access roads, 225th, which would be on the north side of the property, so this would be looking west towards Box Elder, this is looking east. It is a 66-foot wide public right-of-way. It's a section line. However, it only is a 19-foot paved surface, no shoulder turn lane. The average daily traffic count for the portion outside Box Elder is 255 vehicles per day. The only information I could find for inside the city of Box Elder was their 2014 transportation plan, which shows their count at three, at a minimum of 3,000 per day. 151st is a 66-foot wide public right-of-way. It's also a section line. That one's 21 feet wide with a paved surface, no shoulder turn lane, with average daily traffic count of 475 vehicles. Ordinance 14 standards for agriculture requires a 24-foot wide gravel road. So while these roads are paved, they do not meet ordinance 14 standards for width. So when I measured it, white line to white line, that 19-foot is, for 225th is white line to white line, and 21 is white line to white line on 151st, which is the white line on. This didn't really exist, so we went from the edge. This type of request would be, would require commercial or industrial standards, which is a 32-foot wide paved road, which is a 10-foot driving lanes, a 10-foot turn lane, and 1 foot shoulders. So this is just the traffic count for Pennington County, so 150 versus here at 475, and then 225th is at 255. Again, once you get into the city of Box Elder, I don't have the exact numbers. I can just go by what they, the information that they gave us. Future land use for Pennington County, currently, it is a mix of commercial, rural, residential, and agriculture. However, Pennington County is currently in the process of amending their future land use plan, which was approved at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, and I believe the second reading is July 1st. Has the whole property as rural residential. That's to match what the city of Box Elder has, because this is in the city's 3-mile For Box Elder, future land use, currently, there's, it's a mix of commercial and residential. So this bottom left corner is commercial. The rest of it is rural residential, and then it's surrounded by, I believe that's ag, agriculture, oh, no, sorry, rural residential. So this is rural residential. They have it as residential, sorry. Our color for yellow is rural residential, but theirs is just residential, and then their rural residential's this green out here. There is, for their future land use, this purple down here, so within a half mile of the property, there is some industrial zoning. The city of Box Elder is also currently updating their comprehensive plan, and it shows the property as mixed use, which is commercial and higher-density residential, and the adjacent properties are rural residential. So based on Box Elder and Pennington County future land use designations, it doesn't appear that a mining operation would be compatible in the area. So existing land uses within a half mile, there's commercial, so there's a truck stop, food and drink establishments, storage units, daycare, childcare area or building, and a veterinary clinic, and then residential agriculture. Again, it does not appear that a proposed mining operation is compatible with established land uses in the area. Box Elder, major street plan identifies several collector roads, so it's kind of hard to see, but they do have these green lines in here, our collectors, and then they do have a proposed arterial going through the property as well. They also have a shared use path. A shared use path is basically, if you think of Rapid City's bike path, where you have bikers, walkers, joggers, people in wheelchairs, pretty much a mixed use of what you can use in there. They also have proposed, a proposed sewer line to go through for future development. While the current proposal for this doesn't go through the existing, where the mining location would be, appears to be outside of it, that future part, when you get farther down with what they're proposing in the future, I don't know exactly where it is in relation to that. Again, the property is vacant. There is no on-site wastewater treatment system on the property. They've applied for a conditional use permit to have a contractor's storage yard on the subject property. This was read on for interdepartmental review. County highway came back and said if approved, the highway department would require 151st Avenue be approved to ordinance 14 commercial standards. And then the approved approach off 225th Street must be removed as an additional access to the mining location to limit truck traffic on this road segment. 225th Street was approved not knowing that this was additional access to a mining location. And then the county floodplain manager said that the proposed operation is close to the special flood hazard area. It's also closer to designated wetland. The proposed stream crossing that would need engineered plans to show that a proposed 18-inch culver is adequate for the drainage. The application states that the pond would be used to filter any sediment that leaves the site, that it would be prohibited as it is a wetland. And there's concern with groundwater contamination as the applicant is proposing to excavate 40 feet and weld that in the area, shows depths or walls at static water level to be in the 17 to 50-foot range. Again, the applicants are proposing to mine 160 acres for sand and gravel. Depth of excavation would be 40 feet. The operation is expected to go from 2025 to 2045. Access roads are not adequate for the proposed use. The property is within 3-mile plating jurisdiction of the city of Box Elder, and the city future land use identifies the property and surrounding areas as residential and mixed use. Pennington County future land use identifies the property as a mix of commercial, rural, residential, and agriculture. The future land use amendment for the county identifies the property as rural residential. The established land uses in the area are commercial, residential, and agriculture. Aggregates mining is allowed, the use in agriculture district with an approved county mining permit. But since there, it does not appear to meet future land, land use, and is not in harmony with existing land use, staff would recommend to deny. Sorry, I gotta lay back. Staff recommends denial of mining permit, COMB 25-0001, as it is not in harmony with existing land use and future land uses, and lacks adequate access and infrastructure, and impacts to water quality are undetermined.
Thank you. Questions for Cody?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Gary.
So Cody, please identify on 151 and 225, whose authority are those under? The immediate roads around this property?
So, let's see if I have a decent one. Okay. So 225th- Okay, so two twenty-fifth. Sorry, I don't have a very good one showing this. But once you get into the city limits of Box Elder, so anything um from this point, anything that's in green is, is Box Elder. So anything from this point west would be city of Box Elder, and then the rest of it would be county highway. Would have the authority over the road.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Charlie.
Cody, um we have references here, and, and just to be clear, it appears the application, uh if we look at, uh, you know, let's look at. You've got a hundred and six, sixty acres in, in the analysis for sand and gravel. However, the definition of the land involved totals to the full six forty. Which are we dealing with?
Yeah, so um when you're looking at notification requirements in our staff report, the six forty is the entire property. Their permit boundaries would be that hundred and sixty acre. So if it was approved, they'd only be able to do, to uh mine within their permit boundaries, which would be approximately this red.
Okay. Because I noticed that, that the full tax ID number was used on the project information sheet, and, and the full tax ID number is six forty.
Yeah, so we don't have, uh unless that acreage was, was like eloquently described or broken off and has its own legal description, we have to do the legal description of the whole property when we do notifications and, and in the staff report. Uh but their permit boundaries would be limited to um what's shown on their site.
To meet the guidelines and the notification, I understand. Madam Chair, just one additional thing. I did speak on the phone on Saturday for a brief time with the owner, and just for the record, and then on Sunday for a few minutes, in regards mostly to the fact that there's two submission items and where you could get them off the site, and what it involved. I just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the commission?
Madam Chair. I'd also just like to, several years ago, the owner uh showed me this property. Um and just talked about what they'd like to do in the future. And, uh, and I've talked to him fairly recently also, so just for clarification.
Michael, did you have a question?
Yeah, a simple one. So the total reclamation bond for this whole thing is only twenty thousand dollars?
No, so they have to produce one by the state.
I was looking at their, uh, their little booklet, number ten bonding.
I don't, from my understanding, it'd be more, um.
It didn't, didn't seem like much, that's why I was curious.
I want to say that the state has a requirement of, I think it's like thirty-eight. Thirty-eight fifty per acre um that you're disturbing, or um three hundred thousand dollars if you have multiple sites. They allow a statewide um reclamation bond of uh three hundred thousand dollars. But it's thirty-eight fifty per acre for the state. And then for us, they would have to get, um say this was approved, they would have to do a cost estimate for those three things. I listed the erosion, sediment control measures, the reclamation. There's one more, I can't remember off the top of my head. They'd have to bring that in front of the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners would have to approve that, that surety number.
Okay. All right, I was just getting a little concerned, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I will say we have letters from many people, and also the Meade County Board of Commissioners, the city of Box Elder, the Chamber of Commerce of the city of Box Elder, and Douglas School District, all in opposition to this item. We'll open it up to. Is the owner of the property here?
Yes, ma'am.
You're here, okay.
I'd like to observe my comments until I hear what the.
Until the other, until the end, okay. We have a number of requests for people to speak. I think what we're gonna do, since we have so many folks, is we're gonna have a three-minute limit. We have a little black box on the counter here. Brittany will keep time. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have thirty seconds left, and red means your time is up. When you come up, introduce yourself, and we'll start with. Joe Utter.
This one?
Either one, just introduce yourself.
Uh my name's Joe Utter. I've got a property on the east end of Liberty Park Drive. Just a couple of comments. I'm not opposed to developments, things like that. My feeling is this section thirteen, if you look at the map, right next to sections thirteen is this brand-new development where all the people are moving into uh Box Elder. Also to the south, down along the, uh, by the McDonald's there, there's a development going in. I'm here to oppose the uh mining development. I feel that there's gonna be excess noise. I know when you have a berm, you're doing your best you can, but with crushers, dozers, things like that, that's gonna create a lot of noise in the vicinity of the residents. We got dust issues. The wind blows to beat Hack in South Dakota, and that's gonna be an issue. Uh for the city of Box Elder, with the things they're trying to do to make it a better place to live, there's a lot of sections, other than section sixteen, that run all the way to Wasta, that you can find some mining and aggregate uh building. And uh that's about it, so thank you for your uh time.
Thank you. Gary Deering. Meade County Commissioner, is that correct?
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of committee. Gary Deering, Meade County Commission. Uh we have, we have several concerns with this, with this proposal. Uh mainly, we submitted a letter. It didn't get out till last Friday. I don't know if the committee has had a chance to look at it. Our main concerns are due to the vicinity of this project. Uh it's, it's inevitable, you're gonna have to be using some of Meade County's roads. Uh we'd appreciate some uh cooperation, coordination, if it does get that far, uh which I assume we have a good working relationship, it will. But uh that, that is our, that in lies our main concerns, is, is the use of our roads. Uh we all know what uh the roads look like right outside of gravel pits. Uh we have the same troubles you guys do, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Gray.
We did get it, we did get their letter.
Yes, um Tanya Gray.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity. Um first of all, Tanya Gray, I'm resident of Box Elder. Um also am on the Douglas School Board. Um first, I want to say that um we are in opposition to um both permits. Um the gravel mining permit, which is zero zero one, um currently up for um discussion. Um I just want to first apologize. Um we did think that our opposition went to you in the end of May, and um it was apparent this morning that that did not get to you. So I will just highlight a couple of these items here, um that I'm sure are shared by many. But the Douglas um School District, um we believe that the strategic vision of proposed sustainable development, community well-being, and the quality of life for its residents, that this is not congruent with the gravel mining in the close proximity to um Box Elder or to the school district. We believe there are safety risks, noise pollution, environmental pollution, the wear and tear on local roads, um that is excessive. We certainly have the, um, a lot of bus traffic that goes back and forth there. Um in Box Elder itself, along with all that traffic, um we do have kids that walk to school. And not knowing all of the plans with that, we are opposed to the permit. Um certainly, I will not read through this verbatim, but if there are questions there, I'd be happy to answer. But um Douglas School, and as a resident of Box Elder, I do oppose the mining permit.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, Tanya, I know that you have a, a new school building that's proposed for east of this area, I believe.
It will, um, the elementary school, if it goes in, would be to the south.
To the south of it? Are they adjoining property to this?
No.
How far south then?
It would, it actually is across fourteen, down across. The school district building would not be next to this property.
Okay, so there's no school district building that's planned that would be to the east of this property?
Currently, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Myron Mann.
Myron Mann, two-two-four-seven-one Antelope Creek Road. I can stand here and tell you everything. The main thing on this is the safety of that road. It does not handle the truck traffic. You need to come out and drive the south end of that road going on to fourteen sixteen. You have cars in a ditch in the wintertime from the snow pulling them in. The safety issue is the problem to me. Thank you all, let other people talk about the wetlands, the dust, and all that stuff.
Thank you. Jerry Dur.
Good morning, Madam Chair, committee. So Jerry Dur, Commissioner, this is my district. Before I get started, Karen, I just wanted to thank you for your servicing commitment to the Planning Commission and running a meeting just in the last few months that I've watched. You do a great job.
Thank you very much.
So you're gonna be missed. So, so yeah, getting back to this project, I mean, I spoke about it when they had the conditional use permit up here for the staging of the equipment prior to the mining uh permit. And basically, I think the uh planning department has done a very good job, Cody has, as to highlighting why it doesn't fit in this location. So, uh, you know, uh I could speak to everything that's already been talked about, but it just goes back to the fact that uh the future land use and the proximity to Box Elder, and uh really getting back to the long-term effect of having a mining operation that close to the city of Box Elder, which is planned to be, obviously, future growth in that area to be residential. And I would point to, which I did the last time that I was here and talked about this, that uh we have a community just to the west down I ninety in the Blackout Community, Nordale subdivision. And as you drive along the interstate, look to the south. As you're headed west to Sturgis, you're gonna see that fenced-in area and those vacant homes. And that was a mining operation that started early in the nineteen hundreds. And the state did a gravel operation there after they did some gypsum mining. And then the state came in and did a mining operation. It was a DOT or a state facility for mining. And then they did the reclamation. And uh all these decades later, then after that reclamation, a sinkhole appeared a few years ago. And uh we had to do the evacuation in those homes. And that community is now fenced off, and what it did to that uh sanitary district, Nordale sanitary district, they had broken infrastructure from sewer and water. Uh the streets collapsed, and uh that is still sitting fenced off because it's tied up in litigation. And that was something that was reclaimed for, you know, future land use for residential. And it's still an ongoing issue in Meade County. And uh just for some of the reasons that have been talked about, we know where the growth is going to go coming into Pennington County. It's going to go east for that residential growth. And this just is not a good spot. I'm not against gravel mining. Like I said, my neighbors, I can see it from my place just to the west and south of me. You know, have a gravel operation that's been there for decades, not an issue. And uh, you know, so I just think, based on the community in Box Elder and the whole totality of what Cody put together, it would be, for me anyway, an obvious no. And so the recommending board, uh I would like to see a no coming from the Planning Commission, and uh then going to uh the commission, and obviously, I'm not gonna support it. In getting back to disclosure, I have talked to several landowners, been out and had community meeting out there, and talked to both Meade County and Pennington County residents. And obviously, nobody that I've run into is in support of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Randy Canan.
Good mor- good morning. My name's Randy Canan. I live at two-two-four-eight-four Antelope Creek Road. Excuse me, a lot of the speakers who've come before me have said um a lot of what I wanted to say. But I just would like to reiterate that um because of the proposed mining operations, there are a lot of negative impacts that will be felt for the community and residents in the rural living areas. Significant decrease in property value. Overall depreciation and quality of life as a result of noise, dust, traffic, and environment, environmental impacts have, as, have already been stated. As Myron stated earlier, the safety of the roads and the conditions, and as he had said, invite any of you to come in and drive the stretch of one hundred and fifty-first from uh the corner of fourteen sixteen to the intersection of one fifty-first and two twenty-fifth. To see for yourself, a very narrow road, no shoulder at all, very, barely wide enough for school buses um and traffic passing by each other. I do not believe, we believe in good neighbors being good neighbors here in South Dakota, and I don't believe this project would be a good neighbor for the residents or the city of Box Elder. The school district has opposed it, the city of Box Elder opposes it, the community residents oppose it. And therefore, I respectfully urge you to do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Randy Olivier.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us again. Good to see you, Kevin. You weren't here last time. So I'm a, uh.
Go ahead and give us your name again.
Randy Olivier, twenty-two-four-eighty Antelope Creek Road. I live in Meade County, uh just north of the other Randy, so when he says Randy, I get up, but then it was him. So now I'm here. Anyhow, uh that's my check at humor. I don't do that for a living. I'm a real estate agent and broker uh out of Rapid City. I live north of this property. We, we've had a couple of community meetings where we've met with neighbors, uh a lot of concern. As has been spoken, um the city council met and unanimously, majority ruled in opposition to it. And uh as a commercial broker, uh the use doesn't fit with the city. I know that because I tried to bring WAPA power to the north of the interstate, and they would not allow that. And so WAPA had to go to another location in Rapid City. They're a national energy provider. If you're unaware who WAPA is, I'm sure you are. So that's a heavy industrial use that they wanted to bring, and that's what this is. It's a heavy industrial use, so it goes against the grain of the area. Um I believe unanimous uh opposition to this speaks for itself. I don't need to spend a lot more time on it, other than uh I see the school buses travel both of these roads. That's a large concern, since I have kids in school. And I hope that each of you would consider yourself in our residential position adjacent to this mine, as you think through this. While it might not affect you directly, it does affect your citizens, as well as the Meade County citizens. Good to see Gary here today. We were, we were told it was a four-year deal in and out with the initial conditional contractor yard. Were unaware that it was going to convert to a mining operation until later. And uh, and now it's twenty years, I'm hearing today. So I'm a little concerned about the ambiguity uh that was bestowed upon us early on. So thank you, Commissioners. Hope you have a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Kuehl, K-U-E-H-L.
Good morning, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Go ahead and introduce yourself again, please.
Oh, Henry Keel. We own property on Civil Way, which adjourn, uh joins the property. And we have a major concern with our kids and our families in that area. Have they considered NESAPE requirements? I'm sure you all know what that is. It's the National Emissions Standards for He- Hazardous Air Pollution. Have they met those standards, and are they aware what they require? I'm concerned about the haze, because I live on the west side of Rapid, and we get a dust haze coming from the north side. We are mile away from those gravel pits. We're out in Box Elder, we are right next to them. I concur with everything everybody has said so far today. I just have one more thing to say. Box Elder is a growing community. They're proud people. Let them continue to be proud. Let them continue to be proud.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other speakers, sir, the owner of the property? Would you come?
I think probably the permit holders would be...
Okay.
I guess I can kinda come up and...
All right.
...some of these things.
Good morning, Commission. My name is Clyde Lipp. I'm a partner and operations manager for Sixty-three Industries. And I'm the person that put the permit together for this particular project. Just to kinda address the timeline that kinda come up there, Cody was completely correct. With the state, when we pull a mining license, they minimally make us pull it for a twenty-year period. The period of time that we intend on mining on this property is five years. But like I said, per the state's requirements, it was mandated to pull it for a twenty-year period. Just to kinda go back and kinda go through a lot of the concerns that the public are having here, particularly health and safety risks. Everything that is done on a mining site is controlled by MSHA. The state dust, the state controls dust. We have continual inspections for dust and things like that. So it's mandated and implemented that we have to stay within regulations on all of that stuff. The traffic safeties and concerns, I can see that, but ultimately, at the end of the day, when this parcel gets developed, there's going to be far more traffic, construction traffic and whatnot that happens in that time period of time. And where are the materials going to come from? This was, shows as a convenient and close material site to service the development that's currently going on on Ellsworth Air Force Base and with the city of Box Elder. I know a lot of people wanna make a mention, oh, well, choose a different location. Geology chooses the location. We don't choose the location. I mean, yes, we can go further east. The further east you go, the gravel gets smaller and less desirable to make spec aggregate products for engineered purposes. Decreased property values, it's kinda the price of progress that happens with a project like this. I mean, even, even when this particular parcel goes in and gets developed, there's probably going to be a dip in, in property values, just because of the amount of construction traffic and everything that's going on in there. This is just an extension of that, of that time period that's gonna go on with that. Truck traffic and damage to roads, yes, these roads, they're already in poor condition. I think we've had some offline conversation with Joe Miller with Pennington County Highway. And there are things that I think we're willing to kinda work on the backside to come to agreement to make the roads a better, a better road system in the, in the future. Air pollution impacts the lungs respiratory, concerns there. Again, we're mandated and regulated by the state and MSHA. All of our crusher systems have a dust suppression system on it. All of the, all of the roads that would be on site would be mag-watered on a continual basis to keep dust, dust mitigated. We're held to those standards. That's, that's where we have to go. Noise pollution, so it's a hard, kind of a, little bit of a head-scratcher. How close is this to Ellsworth Air Force Base? My crushing operation makes far less noise than, than any of the bombers taking off or landing do. Probably on a, on less, and, and with, from an operation hours aspect, like Cody had addressed, that we hadn't had that in our permit. We run seven, seven AM till four PM. Those are our operating, five days a week. There would be no light, light impact. We don't operate at night. There's no need to. All construction traffic and, and our customers that would be serviced, they're, they're running those same kind of hours of operation. So there's no need to operate outside of those hours of operation. Water, water contamination. I know in our, in our plan, we're stating that there's a forty-foot mining depth. We will not ever reach that. That, that was kind of a broad statement that was put in there. The geology shows that, but from an engineering aspect, and me being an engineer, I don't see that being a depth that we go to. Current pit that we're operating in, in Meade County, that is about, by road, it's ten-and-a-half miles or ten-and-three-quarters of miles away from this location. We're averaging seven to fifteen feet. That's all the deeper that we go chasing these deposits. The other thing with water contamination, the water, the water is already contaminated in this area. It's known PFOS is already in all of this groundwater and surface water contamination in this area. What we would be doing would be, any constituent that we would be putting in or possibly putting into the system would be dust or dirt. And we have SWIPI or stormwater prevention plan that is to address that issue and mitigate those concerns. I know there's been public concerns with wildlife, just, you know, being displaced out of this area. It'll ultimately happen with development anyway. I mean, they're gonna move on and move, move over to the other rural agricultural areas. And then conflicts with the city's master plan and maintaining the, you know, the, kind of the expanded footprint of Box Elder. Working with Mr. DeMersman, you know, he, we approached him, we kinda come to a partnership on this. The end goal of this is, is to end up with a far leveller area that he can pursue development on. That was the purpose of, of going into this mining on this particular property. It was a way of funding it and getting the grading, their initial grading done without having to spend a lot of, a lot of upfront money on it. So, any other, any other questions for me?
Are there questions for Mr. Lipp?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could you repeat what you said about the existing groundwater contamination? What component is that?
PFOS is, is, is the component that is already in the existing groundwater and surface water system out there.
Okay, so that is potassium and phosphorus?
I believe so. It was from, from Ellsworth. It's been there for decades.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Commission, what's your desire? Chair would address a motion on this item, or would...
New hip, I'm moving a little slow, sorry. My name is Mike DeMersman. I was born in New Underwood eighty-six years ago. I've lived in Pennington, Meade County, and schools in those two counties most of my life, except when I was working on missile bases or getting education someplace else. The owners of Sixty-three have businesses in Box Elder, and that was a little bit surprising me, Box Elder's position on this. I understand somebody that lives right across from where this spot would open might be upset. I am a little surprised at Box Elder's position, since for three years, they've had complete access to Section sixteen, and I have helped them in every way that I could. So the principals involved in this thing are not from Sioux Falls or out-of-staters. The only guy that's been out of state for a while is Mr. Lipp over there, school mines graduate. I believe your master's is in environmental hydraulics or something of that sort?
Yes.
When, when they approached me, and we knew about the quality of the gravel because of some studies that the federal government had been doing, I did not go looking for somebody. But I'm dealing with locals that know what they're doing. And what we're trying to do is not make Box Elder worse, but make Box Elder better. I had contacted Commissioner Drews and mentioned to him, I know that you guys are in a terrible position as commissioners, county commissioners, because the roads are being ripped up in both Meade and Pennington County and Box Elder. And here, our operation that will be very small, and the distance on those roads will be half of what it is where they're pulling in from Meade County now. I know that in the permit, we talked about ten acres being open. And if you look at the description that you've got up there, I think they're from nine to eleven acres. I know that's very small, and it's, this isn't Pete Leen and Sons, this isn't Summit, this isn't up in a Pearly operation on Highway sixteen. And I believe, from what Mr. Lipp told me, that he can limit it to ten acres operation at a time, where at least three-quarters of a mile from Box Elder. This operation is, is much smaller, even the open area under our contract, for, when you're doing the reclaiming, can't be more than fifty acres. So I would like to correct Mr. Lipp on one thing. He said that they intended to work for five years. Our contract is for four. And maybe his previous contract with somebody else was five, but our contract is four. So there is gonna be tremendous damage to the roads of Pennington, Meade County, Box Elder, not just from the hauling of gravel. This is a minor compared to, look at your concrete trucks that are gonna come in. Their axle weights are heavier than what these guys are doing now. I hate to disagree too much with Cody, but he said it does, that the roads don't meet the requirement of fourteen. The roads that are coming in down Diaz Avenue from, from Meade County don't meet qualifications. None of them do. And, and you have, Commissioner Drew, you have a tremendous problem, and your other Commissioners, because you're gonna have some tremendous expenditures on roads in the next three years, three or four years. And so far, maybe you're working with Governor's Office of Economic Development. We've got a governor from Meade County, and he's got a very smart lieutenant governor. Maybe they are trying to resolve all these problems. They should try and resolve them, because the state of South Dakota last year, in its general fund, from excise taxes, got over two-hundred-and-sixteen million dollars into the general fund. If you look at the advertising and what the expenditures are gonna be at Ellsworth in the next thirty-six months, I estimate that you're gonna have that much in excise tax going into the state of South Dakota from the burden that are created from Meade and Pennington County. I would hope, Mr. Commissioner, that, that you and the Commissioners from Meade County are working with the Governor's Office of Economic Development or the governor to try and resolve some of these problems. We are not responsible for those problems. Our haul rate to where the aggregate will be used on Ellsworth or in the community is half the distance of what you're pulling from Meade County. Change, 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 it's happening. What we're doing is extremely small, and I would hope, I think it would be a terrible mistake right now for you to deny this permit. You have three options. You can deny, you can improve with a lot of restrictions, or you can continue. I don't know how many of you have been on the property. I'd like to show it to you or have Mr. Lipp show you exactly. The area drops off from highway, from two-twelve to where the operation will come from. There are almost three distinct elevations on this property. There isn't any water problem, except the water problem created by Ellsworth, on this property. In the southern, southern half of this property, there, there's almost a natural amphitheater. Months ago, I made a call to the school offices, and I was connected with a, evidently, the person wasn't in. And I said, I am the majority owner of Section sixteen. There's almost a natural amphitheater in the south part of this property. And I, I have not received a phone call in return. It would be great if the city could afford it, because the potential with the pond for a really beautiful development exists. But I don't know how they're gonna come up with the money. It would, it would be a great benefit. But in, in the preparation that Cory did, he was absolutely wrong in one area when he said it's an increase of traffic. It's a lessening of traffic from where we are to where any other gravel would come in. The burden between your steel flatbeds that are coming in and your, and your concrete is gonna be more severe than, you have less axle weight on the guys that are bringing the gravel in. And our distances are gonna be shorter. They mentioned an exit that they didn't evidently understand what was going on on two-twenty-five. There's access on two-twenty-five in the plan and on one-fifty-one. So when the trucks exit loaded one place, they can come back empty on the other direction. So you don't have any congestion, unnecessary congestion on the highway. But if, if you, without being on the property and seeing the elevations and what we're talking about, I think it would be a tremendous mistake for you to disallow at this time. Your options are to disallow, to continue, or to establish restrictions on the property. I know that ten or eleven acres doesn't sound very much, but I wish you, you put restrictions on the property to, to bind, to bind Sixty-three on that. Perhaps you should review in thirty-six months to see if we've done all the restrictions that you, reasonable restrictions that you decide to put on the property. So as the owner of the property, I would welcome this. They have to reconstruct the property when the gravel's off. This could be a great benefit to me, because as the permit indicates, this is rolling hills. If I can have a flat area that's totally flat or a five-degree or seven-degree grade, then I have a really nice area for development, which I would intend to do. Now, that development is not gonna take place immediately. The sewer hasn't come in across my land. This is, all the engineering department of Box Elder and their hired engineer has prepared all the sewer information concerned, that goes across sixteen. As I said, there's, there's very degree of elevation that you should see before you make your decision on this, because the preparations that you have do not adequately explain what is there. The Box Elder, if they come across my property and I allow them to come down where they want to, it would help Box Elder, because one of the drainages would be natural, and they wouldn't have to have a lift state, a lift station, which eliminates the maintenance of that lift station, electricity in the building, a lift station. That's the, the west arm that would come out of Box Elder. The north arm goes up to, on, to Section nine above us, and then goes below us on Section twenty-one down to where it would connect with the sewer. Although the engineer... 21, down to where it would connect with the sewer. Although the engineering has been done by the city of Box Elder, I don't know yet where they're going to get the money for the sewer. If they get the money in the next year and the thing is built within 36 months, that would be great for me, because that area that now was level, I would be able to, to develop. But people, 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 the changes are going to be tremendous. I don't, I don't envy you, Commissioner Drews, or the commissioners from Meade County, and I assume maybe Ellsworth Task Force and Ellsworth Base, and you are all working together, which would be unusual for concern, considering some of the stuff that's gone on in the past. But it is so, it is so important that you do this. The expenditures, this is one of the biggest happenings since O'Wahy, since the building of the dam. And what we're talking about, I can understand why a lot of the people are concerned, because there's going to be more traffic. You're damn right, there's going to be more traffic. But the little traffic that we have from our operation is shorter than anywhere they're hauling aggregate in now. The city of Box Elder did not plan this all the way to Title Line, so they could take care of the poop from the, from the cattle up there. They extended the sewer because of people, and the tremendous amount of people that are going to be in 9 north of us and beyond. So I would ask you, please, either me or somebody would, would love to take you on the property, so you could see in that square mile, the elevations that are different, because this study does not adequate, adequate represent what is there. So I would take any questions you have. Talked longer than I thought I was going to, but this is, this is very important. And, and if, if you take a small operation like this and give it an automatic no, it would be a tremendous mistake. I don't envy your responsibility, but I think you should really examine the property. I think if you did examine the property, you would grant a conditional use, probably with some very tough restrictions, some of which I would appreciate, because that eventually is going to improve my property. Thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Go ahead.
How long have you owned the property, Mr. Demersman? And you have, I assume, assorted owners or other owners?
We've owned the property, I think it's more than 30 years. And the only, we've cooperated with Box Elder completely with access in Ellsworth the past three years, because they've wanted it. And I forget when we paid the contract off, Commissioner, but it's, it's been quite a while. And our only income off the property has been cattle, selling our grass. And there will continue, the, the, the grass operation will continue. What these guys are doing is, is not a sufficient size that is going to affect our ability to sell our grass. And it's pretty wet right now, so the grass looks good. When you go out there and examine it, and look over the pond, I think you'll, you'll see that it's in pretty good shape.
Just one more question.
Sir.
What did you have in those 30 years, what did you have planned for the property? You don't look like agricultural. Mike?
Well, I've branded and cacerated more cabs than you have, Mr. Demersman.
Well, I can believe that.
But, but, no, eventually developed, because it's a natural, the land that is right next to Box Elder is a plateau. And then the land that's the furthest from this operation, down in the southwest corner, is right where the Turnin Liberty Boulevard is. So I hope to make a lot of money off that someday, because that's going to be a natural commercial development.
And then my last one would be, when did, what would you say your latest possibilities with this, and, you know, your development as a quarry part of it?
Oh.
When did that all start?
We found out that, that there's a good gravel, there's an anomaly, there's a little stretch on the eastern part of our property, where there's, there's really good gravel, and we've known about that for two or three years, but we, we were approaching on the thing. And with tight restrictions that you would impose as far as size, and even the time limit, if you want to reexamine it after 36 months, would be fine. We'd be with it. We're not trying to destroy. And there's been comment here about the lessening of property value. I anticipate that my property value is going to go up substantial. And a lot of the people around that are outside of town, along these roads, are going to find their taxes, and their valuations are going to go way, way up, as Box Elder builds out. There are any doubt about that. It's, I have represented several realtors, and I know that, I know what happens when you expand. So that's the plans.
Thank you.
Eventually, I'd, this little area north would be probably the last bit developed, possibly, but I would have, I wouldn't have a lot of money into trying to make the land usable or level, because I would have the right to have the land closed properly and seeded. So I would have some good development property. So thank you very much.
Laurie, you have a question?
Madam Chair. Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about reclaiming it, you know, you're going to do, you're going to do like about 10 acres development at a time, would you, or reclamation at a time. Would you be developing that as, right after reclamation, as they have the, the mining operation going on, or isn't that possible? Is that something that's going to happen at the end?
The land, they can only open up 10 or 11 acres.
Yeah.
But the rework period could be, area could be no more than 50 acres under my, under the contract we have with them for the next four years. So I don't know when it'd be developed. The natural development would be continuation, the, the flat metal, which would be northwest quarter, without anything being done, that should develop just as soon as sewer gets in.
Okay.
But, you know, they've done the engineering, but they don't have the money. So sewer isn't going to be coming in for a while.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Were there other questions?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Three-minute limit, you can come up and introduce yourself.
My name is Patrick Schubert, I'm Board Two Councilman in Box Elder. I currently live here in South Dakota, because I spent the first 25 years of my life in a toxic wasteland called New Jersey. I've been poisoned with everything from sulfides, benzines, paraffins, and PFNA's in water. I've been exposed to 160, 186,000 gallons of compressed vinyl chloride due to a train wreck. I get real touchy when I hear environmental issues creeping up around me, my friends, my neighbors. And I'd like to know how many people have looked into the research done for the health hazards of gravel pits. Anybody here? I've done it. The National Library of Medicine has studied areas ranging from gravel pits to war zones that have high exposure to heavy dust pollution. One study looked at people who lived within and just outside a 500-meter zone around gravel pits. Many residents inside and out of the five, inside and out of the 500 meters were given lung function tests. High levels of reactions, or high level of reductions in lung functions were reported within 500 meters. 85% of people reported damages to their land. 97% reported impediments to crop growth. 85, or 98% reported dust in their homes. 22% of residents in the plume area reported eyesoreness, dryness, compared to 3% outside of the 500 meters. Now, I want Box Elder to expand to its fullest potential, but I want it done safely. I want it done wisely. And I want it to be done with the idea in their mind at all times. The people have to be safe. There is no exception for these matters. Now, this, this board should know that the PFOS problem with Ellsworth is on the western edge of our city. We have a water deal with Rapid City to help us get clean water to the people that live in that area. There is no PFOS issue east of Box Elder that anybody knows of at this point. Correct or incorrect?
Incorrect.
Okay. The people that want to make money are going to argue against me.
Time, time.
Well, here's photos of our streets and their dump truck rolling around town without covers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for information, do you want any more information of PFOS on Ellsworth? It is on the east side of the water dam. I can explain the speed of the rising.
I think, I don't think so. Chair, or excuse me, Commission, the chair would address a motion on this item, or discussion amongst us? Yes.
Before a motion comes, can I make a statement?
Sure.
So I think it's a shame when we have to come to a meeting like this without having the gathering of those that are concerned, with the ones that are planning on the development of gravel pit, the owners of the property, to try to understand each other of the concerns and of the endeavor that's being proposed. Because I think a lot of these issues that are brought up can be mitigated, and could have been mitigated prior to this type of meeting. Unfortunately, that's not happened. And, and quite frankly, maybe there wasn't a point in time that everybody could have come together and agreed as to how this might work. Maybe they would have put further limitations relative to the amount that would be open at a time, or the total amount, or the total time that the gravel pit would be in process, et cetera. But unfortunately, that type of meeting didn't happen. And I feel bad for that, because, I mean, we faced that type of situation before these various commissions all the time. But I think there is opportunities for people to get together prior to coming to a government entity, and asking the government entity to make those final decisions. Now, I understand, Mr. Demersman is saying, you know, he's, he's open to a lot of conditions, if that's what, what it comes down to, in order to try to accomplish what his goal is at this point in time. But I think a lot of those particular conditions could have been mitigated beforehand, and not, not be of a concern. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commission, what's your desire?
Madam Chair.
Pardon?
I was on the docket to speak, but I haven't been called for.
What's your name?
Tim McGriff.
You put your number 13. This is number 12. Come on up, then.
Fucking number 13.
Thank you, Madam Chair, County Commissioners. I'm Tim McGriff. I own the adjoining land to this project. Yes. We're doing a development right off of Liberty Boulevard, a 320-acre development. Our development didn't encroach, didn't impact any of our neighbors. It was an attribute to the city of Box Elder. I don't, I'm a firm believer, you can do whatever you want to on your land, as long as it doesn't impact your neighbors. This particular will impact the neighbors. I've known most of these people that live around here, because I grew up around that area. I currently live north of New Underwood. I'm a witness to what these trucks do to the road. These 18-axle trucks that probably aren't going to get scaled. I don't know, I haven't heard anything about scaling these trucks yet, when they leave that pit. But the ones leaving from the Phillips pit there at New Underwood, hmm, they don't get scaled all the time. And they have been caught here recently with way overweight on their axles, their 8,000-pound weight limit, they were over. These guys are hauling 180,000 pounds of material. What's that going to do to that 151st and 225? It's not going to be good. Right now, they're starting to reclaim the New Underwood Road for seven miles. That's the first start. And it's, it's a mess. It's going to cause, well, the speed limit is down to 45 mile an hour now. But the road, the property values is an issue. We are doing that development. Yes, they say it's a four-year contract. I know how contracts can be extended. You know, if it's got an open-ended of 45 years, well, let's keep going. We found gravel, let's keep going. I own also, on that property, there's two wetlands, two, two nice stock dams, that, this drainage runs right into that. My concern is what's going to happen. We have flooding there all the time, on a wet year. That road, that's been washed out, his dam's been washed out, mine's been washed out. Their water resource, where are they going to get their water from? I've heard that, from them, that they're going to use the water out of the dam. Well, how does that work? Because that also feeds our dams down below. I don't think the city of Box Elder is going to allow them water. So where are they going to get their water from? And yes, that land where they're going to start at is already level. This is just solely based on money to further develop his property, to get revenue from it.
Time.
And, sorry. That's all I got.
Thank you. I'm waiting. Commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Been in real estate for about 25 years, and am a strong believer in property rights. However, location is everything in a situation like this. When you look at the map, you know, that full section there, the west side of it, is obviously where construction expansion will go in the Box Elder area eventually. My two cents worth on it is, this is one of the balancing things. It is always tough for situations like this, that I can't say that I support this, being so close to Box Elder. And again, it's, it's a balancing act between location, that is awful close to Box Elder, and property rights.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a thought. We're in the planning business. There's people that oppose it that are in the planning business. And it looks like the horse got out the gate on this a little bit, when it comes to planning. The planning was done for the owner, and the owner had the right to review this. The planning has been done by offices like Brittany's, like, right or wrong, like Box Elder has. And we've got Meade sitting there that doesn't have planning and zoning right alongside the property as well. But it appears that a number of people have invested in housing in this sort of direction, possible commercial properties, that sort of thing. It's kind of tough to stick a commercial, an industrial use right in on top of those. It's like being in a non-planned area, and we've got a commitment, in fact, a sworn oath, that will support the planning and the ordinances pending the county. I think that's the most difficult part, as far as seeing the property and, and what's going on. It certainly would be a benefit to any one of us, as the... going on, it certainly would be of benefit to any one of us, as the owner brought up. But I don't know that that's going to change the fact that ten years ago, this was a different look than it was now, and I think the owners at that time knew that. They, they were looking at development too, of a nature not to do with, with industrial. I just think the horse got out the gate and they're built around them and there's already planning from too many offices that go along with it. Yes, Box Elder may not have the money to put the sewer line in or whatnot, but it looks to me like a lot of feet got on the ground about it, and or something's being done. But I'm sure there's other properties in that area that don't have any more development on than this property. So, it's going to be a tough one to decide whether, when you look at trying to support people's right to use properties, Kevin, but it, each one of us, I think up here, we take that pretty serious. But this one's a tough one because of the fact of the timing of the thing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair would address a motion on this item?
I'll move, so that we can move this on, this does have to go to the Board of Commissioners. I'm going to move that we deny per staff's recommendation without prejudice. Is that with prejudice, where they are not going to get charged twice if they go back at it?
That's without prejudice.
That's what I thought it was, without. Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to deny this application without prejudice? Discussion amongst the board? I think reasons for the, that the commission has, is voting this way have been made clear, you know, roads and, although we kind of have been poo-pooed on how bad the roads are, I don't think that's, that's fair. That doesn't mean we have the right to approve something that'll make them a lot worse, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If this was residential development, am I wrong, Brittany, we would require the residential developer to improve the road situation in and out of, as we have east of town?
Well, this would fall under Box Elder subdivision regulations.
Right.
But subdivision regulations do require road improvements, yes. Otherwise, they would have to get a waiver or a variance from the approving authority, whether it's the council.
Or increasing the density, is that correct?
Without improving the roads.
Thank you.
Any discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Did you say no also, Gary?
Yeah, no.
So it's five to two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think we need to take serious consideration about continuing thirteen because of the fact that this goes on to the Board of Commissioners, item twelve. Thirteen is a conditional use permit which stops at us and should we approve or deny it, it takes either party to go to Circuit Court to question our decision where that's their only option. I would suggest that that be continued until there's a final decision by the Board of Commissioners on our agenda item number twelve, which is, I better put the right number in the record on this. Twenty-five zero 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 one, that we continue item thirteen because it is a conditional use permit.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we, let me get the right number here, it'll only take a second.
Pardon?
A date to, for the continuance.
Continue to when? After the next commission meeting?
It's July fourteenth.
Will this go to the commissioners at their next meeting then?
This go, the.
Or the item twelve?
Yeah, the mining, oh, sorry, Cody Sacks, Senior Planner, the mining permit would go to the next Board of Commissioners meeting, which is, I believe, Tuesday the first, so next Tuesday.
And then our first meeting is July, July is July fourteenth.
July fourteenth?
Madam Chair, I move that we continue CO CU twenty-five dash zero zero one two to coincide with action by the Board of Commissioners, their next meeting, this item would be on is the twenty.
The fourteenth.
Did you say? I didn't hear your date.
The fourteenth.
So, so this item will go to the Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, July first?
Okay.
Our first planning commission meeting in July is July fourteenth.
But it would be necessary to, to coincide with their action?
Right.
Thank you.
Both of them to be heard on the same day? Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
I had some applicants that wish to speak, do you still wish to speak knowing that this will be continued if it's passed? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Executive session is not needed today. County Board report, Brittany?
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the June ninth Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Items from the public? Items from staff? No? Items from the membership?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just like to thank you for your service to the county. You spent three years on this planning commission.
Five.
Five years.
Yeah, I was appointed to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
To replace Travis.
For five years and very much appreciated, not only for you, but all the Planning Commission members to, to provide this service on behalf of Pennington County. So, thank you much.
It's been interesting.
Can we, can we vote on denying her?
I don't think so.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.
Fucking rule.